I sit down with John. And you Dan. Hello? I think you got one?
I've got one, go.
Okay, y'all ready?
Yep.
Okay, it is. It's 5:59. I guess we can go ahead and start. 5:59, February 4th, 2025. Call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of City of Montgomery to order. We have a new agenda on the item. We are now saying the both pledges of allegiances. So if you'd all stand. I'll get the start with the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas pledge?
On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next. Is there anyone in the audience that would need to speak on any item that are that is on the agendas? Or any other?
That needs to speak that's on the agenda?
That's not on the agenda? Or, okay, all right. All righty, then we will move on to item number three. Consideration and possible action on the regular minutes meetings of January 7th, 2025.
I make a motion to per the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Item number four, consideration and possible action on proposed proposal to make improvements on a property located at 914 College Street. Is there anyone here? Okay.
My name is Mary Lee Thompson. I've owned this property since 1999. And I'm going to be endeavoring to make improvements to the property and make it my homestead. So I have a packet that you all have had an opportunity to review. So do you have any questions for me about the proposed items?
The only, there's a couple of questions. You said that you're going to build up on one side to divert the water that's coming from the other side. You have water that goes through your property.
So I won't be building up on my east side, which neighbors Ms. Langley's old house, her, the mom. It slopes right into my house.
Yes.
And so what I'd like to do is create a swale between my house and her, their house, to divert that to go into my backyard. Because currently it goes right underneath my house. And that's what's been causing all my settlement issues. Well, not all of them, but a lot of the settlement issues. So the purpose of raising the home 16 inches is to be able to build that up so that I can create a nice little, so it's not so severe, right? And make it aesthetically pleasing and functional.
So is that an engineer or something that the city has to look into because of you're diverting or you're moving the landscape of the land? Because there's lots of natural waterways. I'm just asking because I don't know.
Yeah, I hope not. I hope it's a simple issue where I'm moving it from going across my property to the west and diverting it to the north. Because behind us, behind my property, is a floodway.
Yes.
Right, and so nothing's going to be built there. And it's just going to go down to the creek and move on. And I don't think it adversely affects any neighboring tracts.
Does that, Chris, does that need to be injured? That little swell, or does that need to be?
If it's just for block drainage, it does not.
Okay.
So the, it's the College Street drainage improvement that the city is undertaking, which is at the culverts, you know, improving that area. And it also includes improving the roadside ditch in front of this property. But as far as on the surface drainage, you know, she's making slight changes to her own grade and landscape that doesn't affect.
Okay, so we'll call it a landscaping. You're upgrading your landscaping.
And basically what that water will do, it'll, instead of dumping into that swell between you and the Langleys now, it'll just take a shortcut to the back.
Correct, yes, yes. And if you so choose to talk about the addition of the garage, that's the same idea as well. The riff line will follow the existing house. And my intention would be to gutter front and back. And then I can pipe the front gutter to the rear gutter and get it all the way to the back of the property. So it has no effect to the neighboring property on the west of me.
Okay.
So you're, what you're standing for us now is to ask about the improvements and the considerations of what you've written, right? Like things you want to do.
Yes, because my understanding is because I'm going to re-level the home and also request that it be raised 16 inches, I have to bring that before you because I fall within the historical guidelines.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think the idea of raising it gives me the opportunity to get better access under the home, which I don't have because there's only about four inches on the front corner. And therefore, I can't properly address any issues, you know, whether it be pipe or insulation, or it's too wet and there's some rotting issues or whatever.
Well, I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you coming to us prior to you.
Doing it.
Doing it. And I also want to say thank you to you because you realize you're in the historic district. Not so much your house, so piece of property, but you're in the district and you have enough consideration for the City of Montgomery to come in and to seek what we can and cannot have done in the historic district. I just want to thank you for that very much.
And the thoroughness, the thoroughness of this application must be fantastic.
It really helps. Yeah, I mean, everything looks like you're doing, you know, to the, to update the house and then the garage it'll match. I guess our only big concern here is just that variance on the.
On the west side.
On the west side.
And my question earlier, I know that we had that 10-foot setback for the subdivision that we're putting in. But when I looked at your home, it's not a regular subdivision. It's actual property. And to be honest, if you were to put that garage there, I mean, doesn't, is there another swell or a drop in your property?
Yeah, that's the, that's the drainage.
Yeah, so the history of that is that originally the property to the left of me or the west of me was part of my property. And back in, I don't know, I've got the paperwork. But the city approved us to subdivide that and separate it. So instead of it being .70 acres, it's now .30 and .40. And at the time we did that, there were no such thing as side building lines. And so my understanding from the survey company is that when you make a subdivision like that, that's what they call it, is a subdivision.
Yeah.
So the division of that or the separation of that created a subdivision.
Okay.
So Chris, this goes along with our ordinances for subdivisions in this piece of property that we're talking about here?
Well, I have not been researching, but please, for what is Tilly asking her back?
Yes, the required is 10, but she's asking for five, seven.
Yeah.
So with the ordinance, that's 10.
Yeah. So we'll, that's on item number five, so.
Let's do four.
Let's get four out of the way first. That's just, that's the improvements on the, the house, the garage, or the house and the property.
The skirting around after you raised the house up 16 inches, is that skirting just lattice work?
Yes, it will remain as lattice work because I need to still have access and the house needs to breathe. So I think that's the appropriate thing to do. And of course, it would be painted to match the siding.
My next question.
Right, it's not going to be white.
Yeah.
Because nothing on the house will be technically white other than trim. So I would carry that siding color down onto the lattice, which is now the way it is as well.
Do you know? Kevin, have the physical copies of the samples of the paint, of the number of complaints we get? That is sometimes.
Yeah, it's in your package.
Actually, I've got a picture of them, but it's kind of hard to see on the.
Yeah, it's black and mine grayed out too.
I did, I, no, but I can.
From what I can see, it's just on the computer.
So it's not dissimilar to what exists there now? The green might be a slight shade different, but I think that you guys have.
Oh, it's green?
Yes, well.
Mine come out like gray.
Somewhere.
You can't, I couldn't tell when I looked.
But I can bring those to you if you need actual samples of them?
Yes, we do. Any type of material that you do in the historic district, we really like to see, feel it, touch it. We've had colors that have been given to us and they didn't actually match. Yeah. Because the different lights and stuff that hit it.
Yeah, we have, we have the existing.
So it's very similar to this. I mean, the shade of green, most people probably wouldn't even identify that it's a different color.
Right.
You guys looking for the colors of that? Because she's going to get the samples of Tilly.
Yes.
Tilly got the actual colors.
Oh, okay.
We just want to be consistent.
Yes.
Because other people that have come before us, we've been specific and said, bring this to us and let us see so that we have the backup.
Right, these are actual swatches from Sherwin-Williams, so you'll have the number and everything. So.
Marion, were you going to say something?
Yes, I was. Let me go back to it.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I do have a question about the trees.
Yes.
Those are, I'm the tree hugger of the group.
I understand. I am a tree hugger myself.
So.
They were causing some problems.
Yes, the pecan trees do, yes.
Well, yeah, so the one tree is right where the garage is going to be placed. And the other tree was causing the foundation stuff happening, you know, movement. And squirrels, spent $400 getting squirrels away from my attic.
So you, are you on pure and being?
I am.
Okay, so it's affecting your peers? Okay, shifting, okay.
Yeah.
So when you add on, will you be doing peers as well? Or how are you going to?
So I'm not adding on.
But I mean, when you go to a different structure?
I'm just raising it up.
All right.
There's no, the footprint of the home on the outside isn't changing at all.
Okay.
So I'm going to, my foundation will be with Allied, they're who I'm going to contract with. And they're going to put concrete pilings in and they're going to drive them in. And they're going to be stabilized with a collar. And then they're going to lift it 16 inches so that I can now get insulation under the front part of my home and move the plumbing that needs to be corrected because it's rusted and rotted and come apart. And then I think the only other question that Corinne had mentioned that you might be concerned about is fencing. So I, I think, can I bring this forward for you guys? Okay, good. The red areas are where we're talking about fencing. So this would just be a wood privacy gate to, so you won't see an air conditioning system in my, in my garbage cans. And then these sidelines will come back to the existing fence that ties into the Lone Star, what is that, Lone Star, you know?
Parkway, yes.
And that, I would like that to be in wrought iron. And not anything higher than five foot, but I have my dog, so. And you're willing to keep this piece if you like also.
We can give it to the secretary, she'll put it in our packet.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Corinne asked me to do some mockup so that you would.
Okay.
Do we have any ordinances of the height of the fence for backup? Is it four foot, five foot's okay in the backyard?
I think the five is, side yard's five, I believe.
I just want to make sure because.
Yeah, I think it's five or six.
So I hope that it's a lot better when I get done.
I'm sure it will, yes. Okay.
And the garage is a two-car?
It is, if they'll approve it. I made it a little bit longer than a normal garage because I have a four-door F-250 pickup truck.
Is this the home you'll be living in or is it rental property or?
It has been rental property and I am downsizing and it will be my primary residence.
And you're going to homestead it, okay.
Okay.
And you've already been in touch with the city about where they're coming with that culvert? So that when you go to put your driveway in, it'll be in proportion to where they're putting it?
So I had a conversation, or I had, I have received an email from Public Works and they're going to work with me and we're going to maybe even do some cost share on when they get ready to set that culvert. Because I don't, my goal and my wish would be to extend the throat of my driveway a little bit wider because it's pretty narrow. But there's an existing manhole there, a sewer manhole. But when they come in to do that restructuring of the ditch, that, we don't know how that's going, I haven't seen the plans on that. So hopefully, we can all work together and come up with a really great plan that looks way better than what we have out there right now.
Chris, is there any problem with her widening the width of her driveway?
No, as long as the culvert's there.
Okay. All right.
Doesn't necessarily matter. As far as, you know, that project just got kicked off a couple of weeks ago. So they're surveying now, so we'll work with property owners, all those property owners because this is going to be a basic project.
Yeah, it's going to be hard for people to get that.
Yes, so we're working on. Generally amazing, just so it's easy.
Okay.
But we'll be in contact with the property owners.
All right, so I see railing and I see the outside of the house. What's the white, the trim? Not the white, that other color. What are you doing for the shutters? Are you taking shutters back on, are you putting shutters back on there?
Yeah, the shutters will remain black like they are.
Black, okay.
There are going to be a few windows that are missing on the right side of the house and the rear of the house. But the shutters will remain on the other windows as they are now.
And your windows are going to look like they are now with the repaints on top?
I'm going to retain those windows. And I'm actually going to use some of them that I'm removing on the garage because they're not very old. And I think that they do a nice job to implement the idea of a craftsman-style home. So, and they're, you know, they're double painted. I think they're in pretty great shape. The other thing that I should notify you guys about is that I've met with Entergy and, you know, I want to take that overhead line that goes from the pole through my riser on my house where the electric goes to my house. Okay, well, it's so low that I won't be able to get concrete trucks in there. So I, in my proposal, I want to make that an underground service to my home from the power pole. And they told me that basically the electrician would be handling that work and that they would come out and inspect and reconnect when we're ready. So I spoke with my electrician this morning and I called April 1st this morning to get line notification, you know, locations. And by Thursday, I should have those and then we can begin that process. So those pretty unsightly wires will be gone.
Okay.
As will some of the other things on the sides of the house, like the guttering for the HVAC system, that will be all on the inside of the house. And the drain, the secondary drain for the HVAC system on the right-hand side will be gone and appropriately put within a soffit. And so you don't see all that stuff.
Are you doing gas and electric?
No, it's going to remain all electric because gas is not to my property. I mean, if it's there, I'd be jumping for joy, but I think it's, I would have to put propane in.
Yeah, there's a couple of, where I live, the older subdivision, it's got gas. A couple of people have gas, which is appropriate.
Well, I noticed, I think that one of the newer homes on the other side, you know, on my street, but on the other side, the two-story homes, it looked like maybe one of them had a gas meter, but I don't know.
Me either. I see a gas meter right across the street from me and I was, that home was there way before I was, so.
I think I'm going to spend enough money on the underground that I would stay all electric.
And all those permits have been?
Not yet because I was waiting to get an approval from you about lifting the home up.
Oh, I got you, okay, okay.
And I'm ready to go. I mean, my permits all filled out, I'm just kind of getting the blessing. And then I'll, you know, we'll address the variance issue. And I think I have to return and come before City Council on the 23rd or 25th or whatever it is to get that. But if I have grant, if you all grant me the ability to proceed, then the remodeling will begin.
Okay, all right.
I feel like, and from what the information you've given us, is you are keeping with the characteristics of the historic area and you're keeping your home to, to the historical stat that it's at right now. I'm not sure about the wrought iron fence in the back, but it is in the back. I'm sure it's not going to be a problem. But do you have any intention on doing anything to the front yard for fencing or just the back?
Just the back. And it's just to contain a dog.
Yeah.
And I thought it would probably look better than a wood fence because that just kind of.
I'm just trying to remember, there's not many fences. I drove back there, I think, yeah. There's a privacy fence almost to back by the trailer home. I think they have a six-foot, probably six-foot.
Oh, yeah, that'd be James Langley.
Yeah.
So I also own 920 College Street and I'm right next door to him. And he did, he built that five-foot fence.
All right. I feel like you're keeping with the historical preservation of our downtown area and you've brought us all the information. Of course, Tilly will be watching and the city will make sure that your permits are up to date and ready to go. I make a motion that we pass the consideration of possible proposal to make improvements on your property located at 914 College Street.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes for the approval of the approvals on the property located at 914 College Street. And we'll, you want to put the paint approved as submitted in your?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So I think now we have to talk about the variance.
Yeah, so next we'll move on to item five. Consider and possible action on the request for a side yard setback variance for a proposed new accessory structure or garage on the property located 914 College Street. So we've kind of already.
Is this a recommendation to City Council or is this an approval?
So.
I think it's a recommendation.
Consideration and possible action.
Recommendation is for staff recommends approval of the five to seven-foot side.
Okay. That's what I'm going to confirm.
With the following conditions, the three conditions to appropriate the building and trade permits must be approved and issued prior to commencement of work to submit a fully commissioned certified survey of the exact location of the new, sorry, I had to make this larger. Exact location of the proposed new accessory structure when presenting the request for variance to the City Council and three obtain final approval of the side yard setback variance from the City Council.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we recommend to City Council that they approve the variance as submitted.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the variance be passed on to City Council for the new garage structure at 914 College Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Do you know when you're going to start with the trees and?
Well, the trees are, the trees are gone because Tilly told me that I could.
I drove by and I was like, where's that tree I was looking?
So the good news is that I will be putting another tree in my front yard.
Okay.
Something that's pretty and maybe that has fall color and, you know, like an ash or elm or something. And the landscaping where the one honey bush was right by my steps was terrible. Trust me, you'll be happy. It'll be pretty.
I just had to ask about the trees because I drove by.
Yeah, you know, so I have a really pretty tree in the backyard too. And it's likely that I'll probably plant another one back there as well to replace the ones that I took down. Because I really do appreciate the trees as well, but they just really caused me a kind of a big expense. Not only, you know, for what they've done, but to remove them was no small task either.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item six. Consideration of possible action on the proposed cover roof over the existing second floor balcony at 401 College Street on the northeast corner. And I believe you have notes in here from.
It looks like you guys approved a cover on that northwest corner.
Yes.
About a year ago.
Yes.
And now they're asking to have the same cover approved on the northeast.
On the northeast corner, okay.
It's the only color, corner that's not covered so far. All of the others are. I drove by there and it looks, I was just wondering, what is, does it look structurally like sound? Like maybe a little wet? Like maybe it's, maybe needs boards replaced on the decking or whatever? I was just wondering, do our ordinances, Tilly walk up there and look at it before he starts?
I know she's looked at it. I'll have her take another look at it again because this is just mainly about that cover.
Yeah.
But if you want to talk about the structure, the structure itself, we'll have her look at it.
Yeah, and I noticed the wrought iron that's up there. And I know some of them, in the, when he presented it last year, he was telling us that he had found some wrought iron that he was using and that it was decorative and we liked it and it looked good and it worked with everything. I noticed that there is three, if not four, that's already standing back there in that corner where the roof is not there yet. So that's my concern is like, how long have they been there? I know when they go to put that roof on there, I know a roofer's not going to just slap a roof on there without it being, you know, sturdy. I'm just wondering if they're going to leave that wrought iron decorative iron? If he's going to replace it or if he's using that? Because he wanted to use it in the front. So I'm not sure about the ones he currently has on there.
Well, he'll have to come with you all with drawings and structural drawings and attachments, okay?
Yeah, just that's our concern, that's my concern. I make a motion that we pass the action on the proposed cover roof over an existing second floor balcony at 401 College Street northeast corner with the condition of checking the structure itself and those metal awnings. I'm calling them awnings, but.
Pillars.
Pillars are decorative.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval for the proposed cover roof over the existing second floor balcony at 401 College Street along with Marion's comments, concerns. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion has passed. Number seven, consideration and possible action on an all-weather windscreen installed around the front porch of 1433. of 14335 Liberty Street.
Anybody here from that company?
What I'm understanding about that, speaking with Tilly, the gentleman, it's interesting that Dave approved it for him before he left here. You guys didn't approve it last year. He's obviously split it back up.
Right.
And so he's, so it's kind of, what do you guys want to do about it?
Well, we didn't approve it last year and Mr. McCorkendale is no longer here. Plus, that's something that should come before us to begin with. And it seems like we went through this last year. It should have made sense to figure, you know, they need to be with the process this time.
It actually looks worse than it did last year.
And what I'm understanding, reading and through here, there were some other temporary posts put up that needed to be approved, permitted or whatever also.
And Carter heard that clear plastic. So, yeah, whatever you guys decide, they need to come before you guys here. But I had to, I was given the impression that he would be here.
Okay.
Did you guys see the six items indicated by Ms. Tilly for the subject to the following conditions for approval? I can read them off if you need me to.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval of all the weather wind screens installed around the front porch subject to the following conditions. One, submit building permit application for the existing wind screens, including all necessary documentation and fees doubled for installation without permit within seven days of this approval. Item two, the installed wind screens must be inspected by the building official to ensure they meet all safety and structural requirements. Any modifications required to bring the wind screens into compliance must be completed within seven days. Item three, if the wind screens cannot be brought into compliance, the property owner must remove them at their own expense within seven days. Item four, if the wind screens are brought into compliance, they can remain in place for a period not to exceed 75 days from January 8th, the first day of notification. After March 24th, 2025, the wind screens must be promptly removed by the property owner. Item five, continued violations and non-compliance will result in community remedies, including escalating fines and penalties. Civil action will be initiated against both the property owner, Racehorse Investments LLC-14335 Liberty Street Series and the tenant Crawfish Kai LLC. This could include lawsuits, injunctions, or other legal measures to enforce compliance and protect communities' interests. And item six, you may appeal this decision within 10 days of this approval to the Board of Adjustments, which is the City of Montgomery City Council.
I think that all meets the ideas of the building permits and structural. But the issue we're dealing with here is it's in the historic district and it's a total eyesore. I think it's, for anybody new coming in to visit the historic district, they see that there and it looks trashy. There's no other better way to describe it.
And we've continually had issues with that area as well, with the compliances. And also, we have issues with the trash, trash cans, trash canisters or whatever. We did not want them to put it up last year. And I do not approve of what it looks like now. It should be taken down.
I make a motion that the.
Well, what, so I got to go on. So I know Officer Tilly put the six on here, but shouldn't there be something in here about the historical downtown standards also?
Add that into the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I mean, we just got through having someone who's in the historic district giving a prime example of what needs to take place when you want to do something in downtown historical Montgomery. And that's the way it should be done, so. And it should be followed, especially like right through downtown, like Main Street.
I make a motion that the request as submitted to retain the use of the clear plastic at the Kai Restaurant be disapproved.
I second.
Okay, let me get my papers here. Okay, we have a motion to, I guess, disapprove, not allow the plastic closure. Hold on, bear with me, at 14335 Liberty Street. The main concern is the historical downtown district, if that's what I'm.
Yes.
Reading, okay. All in favor of the disapprovals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So the motion to not allow the plastic closure has, I guess, been approved. Item number eight, presentation and discussion on the new mural proposed at 14259 Liberty Street.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Anthony Noriga and my wife Rebecca Noriga. We are owners of Texas and Beyond. We are here to present on the idea of incorporating additional artwork on the current mural on the, I guess, north side of the building. Should I answer questions first?
So these will be, we see the pictures that you all presented, these will just be situated on either side of the existing, okay?
The wall is about 38 feet long. The current mural is about 20 feet. So we have about eight or nine feet on each side. So on one side, we're going to have a depiction, a photograph of Charles B. Stewart. And I think you have a picture of the building, one of the buildings that he owned. So we're going to have that building with Charles Stewart. And then on the left side, well, part of the picture will incorporate, and we didn't put that in our email, would incorporate, of course, a picture of the flag, the Texas flag. Somehow I missed that.
It looks like, again, you're working with someone, Larry Forster on the story.
Yeah, he's the one that sent me the photographs.
So they're legit.
You're sufficiently indicating that the Stewart picture is two foot by two foot. How big is the picture of the house?
Small. So I'll give you an idea.
Okay.
Yes. We have the artist do a depiction of what it would look like.
It's a little bigger than that.
I think it says three foot.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's cool looking. Okay, I had a completely different idea. I thought it was all like an individual.
Oh, okay.
That's more than two foot by two foot.
Yeah, it's not a scale.
Yeah.
But it's just to kind of show.
But see, I thought it was going to be here and then here and here, but they're like making it a 3D.
Oh, yeah, okay. I got you.
Okay. I was like, how are they going to do that individually, but okay.
Do you have the other one as well?
Of the horse?
I'm going to blank on the name. Samuel.
Samuel McCullough?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yep, yes. I was curious if you had the similar.
No, it's pretty much going to be just not you.
That one would be about three feet. The artist said doing it two feet, the complexity of the horse and the position. And in order to get, it's like, resembles of McCullough himself, two feet would be really. And plus it'd be, it'd look with eight feet space, he just, three feet roughly.
Are you going to be working, let's see, with the same artist that did the first one?
No.
Okay, well, that's fine. We're just wondering.
You're sharing the cultural background.
Among other local artists, yeah. The artist that, actually, the sculptor that did the Samuel McCullough.
At the bank?
The artist that did that sculpture at the bank, he recommended an artist that we use. And this is a professor, retired professor who knows everything about art. And he is in the process of doing the rough draft now, but yeah, he'll be doing that part. And a different artist would be doing Charles B. Stewart.
Okay, alright.
So we have three different artists.
That's an interesting picture.
Did y'all see this?
Yes.
That would be cool to let them know that this is, this is something.
They're actually paying for it.
They're paying for it.
Yeah, but, oh, cool, okay. It'd be cool to have everybody there and say, hey, okay.
Yeah, they'll be present.
Oh, cool.
Matter of fact, we're celebrating his birthday Saturday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
At the historic society.
Yeah, we couldn't get it, well, we have to at least come here first.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the artists is ready, but some, a couple of days.
Yeah, but we'll celebrate it next year or after it's done.
Yeah.
On Flag Day, let's be ready hopefully by Flag Day. So during that March event, we will, we should have, have both of the.
Well, the historic society is going to celebrate his birthday every year now after this time. It's going to be an annual event.
That's good, that's good.
Okay.
Alright, let's see, my computer just crashed.
I make a motion that we approve the request for the mural as submitted.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the murals proposed at 14259 Liberty Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for approving our case. That was cool.
Okay, item number nine, presentation and discussion of a utility and economic feasibility study for the BCS Capital Commercial and Multi-Family Track Development Number 2415.
Good evening and good morning. So what this is, is, you know, as we have been, a feasibility study is prepared, is also presented both to council and the P&amp;Z. Since both y'all have a role in developing the city, I'm trying to keep y'all up to date with what is going on or posed in the city. So this piece of study was presented to council last week. There was also a workshop with the developer Monday of last week that went over some kind of general concepts. Because what you see in the package is there's a, it's very high level in terms of what the developer is looking at to do on the property. But what I'll do is I'll run through it. I'll run through some of the concepts with the developer and kind of where it stands as of today. Please stop me if you have questions. So where this property is located is behind ransoms. So there's a large 32-acre piece of property that goes from CB Stewart to 105, all along Buffalo Springs and kind of wraps around the ransom property. Y'all remember, now thinking it might be MUDC, but there was a couple of years ago, they were doing the sports fields and MUDC participated in irrigation equipment, things of that. That's this property or a portion of this property here. So what they're looking to do on the property, so I'm starting on page 108 of your packets. There's a handful of exhibits in the report in there, is they are looking to do, have a mixed-use development with multifamily at the northern end of the property and then commercial retail space on the southern portion closer to 105.
What type of multi-family? Apartments?
Apartments. So as far as the details, they do not have as of yet. In their presentation to council, they offered some example products, but the final count, they're looking for anything about 300-ish units. But they still have a lot to determine on actual finished number of units, stories, et cetera. There is not that detail yet. And I'll pass this around. I don't know if this has sent out to everyone, this is what they handed out. It's not the exact application of what they're looking for on this property, but just some examples of their other few projects. So one of the, kind of the main things as part of this study is, you know, one, the zoning of the property today. So right now, the northern portion of the property is zone PD and the remainder, which is the majority of the property is owned by commercial. So the use of retail, commercial space, obviously in the commercial zone is allowed. The PD zone allows multifamily, however, it has to get separate approval from the who controls the PD, which the PD use is controlled by the Buffalo Springs Architectural Control Committee. So they would have to go and obtain approval to use the property. Now, in the restrictions, multifamily is allowed within this area of the PD, but they'll still have to get that additional approval.
What's PD again?
Plain Development. So back in, back in 2004, the Plain Development created a Plain Development District over the center portion of the city. And if you look at page. One, I think it's 118 of your packets should be a copy of an exhibit showing the zoning and the track delivery. Excuse me, 118 of the packets. The other thing to note is based on their preliminary, their multifamily would extend past that PD zone. So they would be having to request a rezone of the portion of the property that's currently zoned commercial that they would want the PD, or excuse me, that they would want the multifamily located on. And they will, in order to do what they're looking for. Going back through the rest of our kind of report. So, you know, as far as water and sewer capacity goes, obviously there is a lot of variation in what the final use of this property does. We went off the information provided by the developer, which was looking at 60,000, 70,000 gallons a day of total water and sewer demand for the entire build-out of the property. So as far as water plant capacity goes, so as you are aware, currently the city is replacing and upsizing the water well at Water Plant Number Two, which is the one right here up at Houston Street. They are also, the city has gone out or has authorized the design of a Busher Pump Edition project at Water Plant Three. And then finally, they've requested qualifications for an engineering firm to get started on the design of Water Plant Number Four, which would be located out near the Red Bird Meadows property, which would include an elevated storage tank, which based on TCQ rules is required once you hit 2,500 dimensions. So all of those things are ongoing in order to continue to meet the demand as everything within the city continues to build out.
Is, if there's 300 apartments, is each apartment a connection to the water system?
Yes.
Okay, so when you're talking, when they're estimating 60,000 gallons, is that based on 300 apartments or less?
300 apartments and then the retail restaurant space all combined for the entire area.
I was looking through your chart. I had a hard time figuring out.
Yeah, we're, so one day we were discussing the next feasibility, which we're working on currently, we're going to take all those tables of usages and put them in one chart or two charts showing capacity over time and projections over time to help make that a whole lot more condensed and easier to follow. Because it's a lot of information on one sheet of paper.
You're pushing the water system too.
You are, you are. There's a lot of, a lot of man and it's a lot of growth that's continuing in the city.
Road traffic.
So your professional opinion on the water. I read in here, you know, the executive summary, the paragraph four and then Alex paragraph four. You know, it's, we should have, and I mean, we're going to have, as citizens here of Montgomery, we're going to, developments are going to cause us to have water shortages.
No, so I mean, you're, you've already, the city's already permitted their next water well. So we're already kind of started that process. The property's been acquired, those are moving forward. Also, when we do our projections, we tend to be conservative. So for example, right now, we're projecting about 80,000 gallons a day more usage than we're actually seeing, just based on usage. Some of that is, you know, it's a connection, but it's a vacant home, so it's not using all of that yet. But we have some play within our numbers and limits. It is tight and the timing is, you know, things have to continue to move. And so they're, they're moving down that way, but it has to continue to move. It can't stop.
Right.
Or else, you know, obviously, we'll be in a situation where there'll have to be a mortuary on permits to build additional capacity.
Now, with all the, I was reading through how this is going to play out and everything. I didn't see any addressing of casualties, like we had a pump struck by lightning.
Right.
And that disrupts the system wide, right.
So when we look at, when the capacities that we list throughout the study are based on what the TCQ requires, which has been done in the city built in. So for example, right now, our limiting capacity is based on Busher pumps, so what actually puts the pressure into the system. But that is because on paper, the TCQ requires that you assume the largest pump is out. pump is out and not operational. So the addition of this pump that we're doing raises that from 568 to 730. Effectively, we have a whole lot more than that, because you have a whole nother pump that's in service, but it assumes that pump is out. As far as the actual water well capacity, you know, that has not been our limiting factor. It is more of the production and getting it out, because the wells that are out of 1097 are quite large and have a lot of capacity that they're not running, you know, heavily today, so there are a lot of room that they can ramp up. But it's also based on the distribution in the system, so how far spread out everything is, which is why Water Plant Four is located on the west side of town to help, so we're not currently pumping from 1097 to get out to Hills of Town Creek. Their Red Bird Meadows is constructing a water line loop that'll connect what's right outside here, all the way back by the high school down Old Plantersville, and then the water plant will sit there. So it makes that distance that water is pumping a whole lot shorter to get the pressure to where we need it.
So now with the water tank, when the water tank is done, that does add better pressure and everything. Is that going to be helpful to the whole system or just a region?
Entire system.
Entire system, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we, you definitely have, you know, a lot of variation amongst the city, but having that located, there's also with like the TriPoint Development, they're extending the water line to cross, so connect Lone Star Parkway to 105 on the west side of town. So the more loops and kind of shortening that distance we can put together, and I'll actually talk about that here in a second on the proposed utility extensions for this project. So right now, in order for water to get to this tract, it goes around Lone Star Parkway or down 149 Lone Star Parkway. So what's proposed in this packet is that they extend the water line that currently ends at the north end of Home Depot, connect it up to Lone Star Parkway to again shorten that distance, so we have redundant loops, so one break doesn't knock out a large portion of the city, and helps shorten that distance to get better pressure and flow throughout the system as a whole.
Are they going to, Tech Dot hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with this, right, with lights and anything like that? It's just going to leave it?
They will. So regarding, you know, traffic concerns, so just all the improvements are just hit that.
Okay.
At once. So wastewater capacity, city council authorized the contract to begin the design of the wastewater treatment plant expansion that has already been permitted last meeting, so last week. So that project is moving forward, which are the timelines that are assumed in this study. And then as far as, back to your question regarding roadway, so, you know, obviously the final use of this tract and the final land plan will dictate a lot of that, but they will have to do an impact analysis on all the roads they connect to. So Tech Dot will have a requirement for them, as well as the city will have a requirement for their connections to CB Stewart and Buffalo Springs. And the results of that analysis will tell us, do they need to do additional turn lines or additional roadway improvements. In the cost of this estimate that was in this study, we assume that they do roadway improvements similar with Home Depot prepared, from where Home Depot left off up to the CB Stewart intersection, and then as well as in the cost of repaving a portion at least of CB Stewart, because that road is, is in need of repair as well. All of those projects, so the roadway improvements, the linear utilities, which is the water line up Lone Star Parkway, as well as water and sewer along 105, are going to be subject to a development agreement to work out, you know, the financing, the funding, the final scope, as far as what the developer will contribute, what the city, if, if an option to reimburse the developer.
Who makes the decision on traffic lights? Because C, that.
So in this case, it'll be Tech Dot. So since the, it's an intersection of a city and Tech Dot road, there will have to be a signal, so the signal warrant analysis has to get approved by Tech Dot.
Okay.
So that, which is what Home Depot did. So when Home Depot came through, they funded, previously the city had done a signal warrant analysis, and Tech Dot said that they would bring the signal on their timeline. Once Home Depot came through, the city updated that signal warrant analysis and put it into the development agreement with Home Depot to fund the installation of.
That's going to throw a lot of traffic on Buffalo Springs right there.
Yes.
Now, since it, and I know this is.
Not to come off of CB Stewart.
But where in the plan is it going to be taken care of from Stewart and Buffalo Springs to Lone Star Parkway? Because as you know, that whole street is in.
Correct.
Need a repair.
And, you know, that's, I think, part of, it would be hard to put that on one, this one developer.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, and we, but we know that, you know, there's been interest in the ramp, what I call the rampy lake property on the opposite side of Buffalo Springs. So looking at that as well as working with the other local partners, because Buffalo Springs, especially with the light, is much more than just a local city street. There's a lot of outside the city traffic that is using Buffalo Springs.
Yes.
Especially with the light now, to be able to get to 105, Home Depot, Kroger, all of those entities that are not, many more cars on there than are residents of the city.
Right.
And so I know that, you know, at least preliminary discussions with the county regarding roadway improvements in general in Buffalo Springs is definitely on that list. There's a lot of, that whole stretch is a lot.
So you say there is some interest already in the cattle ranch?
There has been. It has been quiet lately. Really kind of this property, the property immediately on the hard corner of CB Stewart and 105, there's been interest in. So again, kind of helping close the loop gaps in some of these.
So that's for residential?
That one, again, it hasn't gone anywhere. The initial was a commercial property as well. Oh, are you talking about behind the rampy lake? Yes, residential. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, that was a residential kind of base.
Was there anything in the agreement for the church that's going in, for the road revisions or modifications?
So that agreement is still in the works. However, the, it is, they are extending a water line, and they're also doing sidewalks.
Okay.
Along that side of the road in order, the long-term goals, since the city completed the copper sidewalks project to get to Fernland, having then completed to racetrack. So now we have a short distance that can be closed to have a full sidewalk from essentially Ransoms all the way into downtown. But as far as the roadway improvements themselves, they have not been passed to you roadway improvements for that church.
The house on the hill that used to be City Hall so many years ago, what is, is that part of this development?
That is part of this development.
Will it be torn down, or is it historical, or?
I'm not aware of any historical significance. Doesn't mean there's not. My understanding is that it would be torn down and developed.
And all those trees too.
Correct. Again, their level of planning isn't to that detail to say, we're going to carve this out, we're going to make this, you know, a feature. But, you know, the high level concept of about 17 acres of multifamily and the remainder being between detention and commercial.
Yeah, see, is it three acres of detention?
Yeah. That's what they're. They're, they're working through the detention questions and the best way to do that. Again, Tech Dot will have a heavy hand in this project with the drainage is going toward Tech Dot, so Tech Dot will have to approve that, as well as any driveways or driveway modifications. Tech Dot will have to approve that as well.
Now, is there any discussion on what this commercial reserve area would be?
They, they, so during their presentation on last Monday, they have a couple different concepts. One with a kind of a big box anchor they threw out at the meeting, potentially Academy or some other type of big box retail to anchor the space, but they didn't have, you know, any, there's no hard commitments from any development at this time on what those would be.
Will our plan, the, the grand plan for Montgomery, will that be approved in time for the face of what is going to hit 105? Because as you see now, it's kind of hodgepodge. You know, AutoZone did what it wanted to do, Route, you know, now we've got Sherwin-Williams, it's just, and then whatever's going in next to it.
Fire.
And not just the back. They were also, during, on planning, they're also discussing the backside, especially if you can see it from that hill.
I mean, are we going to hit, is it going to hit? Or is our master plan going to hit so that if they bring a Michael's in or a?
A box store.
A bit, a box store, are they going to be able to follow our guidelines? What, because that's close.
So the next item on the agenda is to kind of give an update on the Kenney Peace Project. However, as far as the timeline goes, we are, they're, we are pushing for action at the second meeting in February, so not the one on the 11th, but the one on the 25th, to at least get that process started, because, you know, the, the proposed changes include zoning changes and subdivision ordinance changes, and there's a handful that require public hearings, rezonings. It's going to take some time to work through, but there is a push to get that, at least the interim ordinance work started at the next couple council meetings. And it really depends on where they end up in their process, how quickly they move forward, and when the ordinances are in effect versus who gets grandfathered in. So there's not a.
Well, that, that plan, the reason, and that's another reason that you mentioned big box, because that plan says no big box west of Buffalo Springs.
That's, and I thought we were going to have in that master plan, I thought we were going to put major things in the front end and say, pass these, so that we could advert what's happening to us right now until we get the grand plan finally approved. And that's, that's why I'm saying something now, is you knew, we knew it was coming, you know, when Home Depot came, we know the others are following. The face of Montgomery is rapidly changing. So I was hoping we would push some ordinances rapidly through, that we could give to the current people that are trying to move into Montgomery and, and put their businesses here, that this is the face of historical Montgomery and it needs to start looking as such.
Correct. And, you know, I can't speak exactly to the timing and who will take in fact, who gets grandfathered in, who would be in the new rules. I'll tell you that we do have a call tomorrow with the attorneys and staff from KKC to make sure everything is teed up to get what we can moving forward as quickly as possible, and how that falls in line with all developments.
Is that what your next agenda is about?
Yes.
To bring these ordinances to you, because KKC is as complete as these, and those are the ones that's going to put all those things into place, and to make sure they're in the right place. And just wanted you guys to take a look at.
Is there any possible way, I don't believe, I downloaded the presentation from, from them for last Monday, but my computer went down. Did you get, did you get?
I didn't get it either.
Okay. Is there any way that?
We can.
They could get that package emailed to them so they could look over the, the proposed redesign of the ordinances?
Yeah, we can talk.
Okay.
Now, what we have today is going to be a bit.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Was this from the workshop?
Yes.
My computer doesn't crash, yeah. The one that happened at 3:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah. Yeah, but that way they can look over and I guess.
Yes, actually the landowner.
Not for, so they are under contract to purchase the land, but they do not, they have not closed on it, is my understanding. Currently, Philip Pfeff is the landowner.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Philip who? Say his last name.
Philip Pfeff.
Okay.
Then on the KKC packet, if someone would have a question or concern about any of those, who should they email or get ahold of?
Maybe with the, like Chris said, tomorrow. What does that mean, Chris?
Afternoon.
Okay.
And so, yeah, if you got any questions, just give it, even on a small, a small.
Okay. I know we had.
If it'd be easier if you had questions, you just wanted to email them all in to me.
Okay.
And then when we have our meeting tomorrow, I can give you like one or two.
Is this that lighting?
Yeah, I gave it to.
Yeah, this has been on our agenda for, golly.
Six months?
Six months now. So, but Chris has a, a copy of it. It's a exterior lighting ordinance that we talked about six months ago and.
I think it was the last Christmas.
Last Christmas, yeah, last, yeah.
Yeah, because we were talking about.
So Chris has a copy of it that he can present if you're meeting tomorrow.
I'll pass it on to the KKC.
Right, okay. And also, I didn't have this, are we, we're still on nine, right?
We're still on nine.
Okay.
So I have two last things on it.
Okay.
And really just kind of introduce one topic. So, you know, overall, when you look at this development based on their anticipated usages, you're looking at approximately a $97 million development after all is built out, which based on your current tax rate, you're looking, that's approximately $368,000 a year in property tax off of this development, obviously excluding any type of sales tax, things like that. I think the packet that I handed out, they have some sales tax projections in there.
Yeah.
If I remember right. Again, it's all preliminary, subject to change. One question that came up from council that I think we're mentioning is, you know, with the vagueness of the, the final plan, what would that change as far as feasibility? What would that change as far as development timing? So obviously, there's a lot of steps yet for them to go through. And what typically is, you know, the, which is the last page of your feasibility study, is just a, this is from your existing development handbook, minus the one that's off to the side, what the process is that development would follow. So where they are at this point is they'll have to make a decision on if they want to continue and proceed forward and start the rezoning process as well as a development agreement. Typically, these development agreements will, will tighten up the term, so it's not just, you know, develop 32 acres for whatever you want. It's develop 32 acres with the assumption of, you know, I'm making up numbers, this isn't what they're proposing, you know, 300 apartment units and 100,000 square feet of retail restaurant space, and have some allowance in there. So like y'all did on Red Bird, you said, okay, it's 650 lots plus or minus 10%. And if it changes, that has to come back to get re-approved. So you would look at the same thing here. You give some guidelines in the agreement, and they come back and say, we've decided we want to do a hotel instead. Obviously, that's a major change in usages and capacities and traffic and everything else that'll have to get reconsidered and reevaluated as part of the agreement. So what a feasibility study does is just that, it kind of lays out the general high level, what development is, what are some considerations, what are some costs to consider to move into a development agreement when actually an agreement to provide service is, is made. So, that's all I have on this one.
Okay.
So action is just, no action, it's just acceptance of the statement.
Any other questions on nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Move on to 10, discussion of the initial preliminary proposed interim ordinances submitted by Keating, Keyston Collaborate, Collaborative.
Now who's, you're going to address this, Chris?
So this was the interim ordinances that for chapter 78, 98, for articles 1, 3, 4, for 1, 3, 6, 7, and it looks like 9, that were presented. And they're here for you guys to look at them to see if there's any questions you may have to, to bring forward. So that's all this was for, was just so that way you were being kept in the loop of what they were bringing forward for consideration for approval. And then we'll be having a meeting tomorrow with the attorneys and the engineers on this. So if you could email anything over to me this evening or first thing in the morning, then we can address them.
Okay, I gave Chris a copy of that lighting. Did you want a copy?
I'll grab it from you at the end.
I have some questions. I, believe it or not, I've read through everything. The lighting was one of the things in, in the historic history. The other thing is, is that the, as currently submitted, the, in the subdivisions, they're, and I'm very happy, the, the lots are called for 75 by 120. Streets are called for 50 feet. To date, the city has given variances in every one of those things. If the city is going to keep giving variances, then they should set the standards the way they should be, where they expect the variances to go. I love the idea of 75 by 120 and definitely 50-foot streets, okay? But it's going to send the wrong message to the citizens of this city if we put this whole thing in place and then six months later, city council says, no, we're going to go with 45-foot lots, which is ridiculous, when you reduce them by 60% from what you said originally. So my point is, is the city council aware, really aware of what we're looking at when we talk about 75 by 120 and 50-foot streets? Because every developer that's going to come in here now is going to ask for variance.
So obviously, I can't speak for what, you know, council's understanding. However, you know, the intent of this round of ordinances is interim. So it's, it's a kind of a temporary stopgap. stopgap with the long-term plan really getting more into the weeds on addressing the lot sizes. I believe, and, you know, I said, correct me if I, if I go wrong, is they're looking at kind of multiple zonings of residential to allow for certain small, smaller lots, higher density, larger density, or, excuse me, higher density, lower density, or larger lot zonings. What this does is kind of that first pass, and one of the biggest changes is that downtown, there's a lot of changes in here, but creating, create, creation of the downtown development district, which would help with what Marion was talking about regarding, you know, the, the aesthetics and the look and the use of the central kind of core, what would it get rezoned to be the downtown development district on, you know, if, if you've sat through or seen the presentation, you know, it has height, it's a, a point system or a scoring system between different types of development and facade and heights and things like that to begin variation, so it's not just flat buildings all over the place. I, I do not know the details to be able to go into the scoring, I know that, you know, the state has requirements on what you can and can't regulate, so the scoring system is a way to be able to get around it, because it gives kind of both incentive, incentives to provide a higher quality product to the city in exchange for that.
But.
I'll, I'll speak for council, yes, we've, they've gotten a message about the variances and about the streets being there. It's happened over and over again, and what we talked about early on this year was, you guys were never, apart from, were never given a chance to say, no, this is how this should be. So, yeah, they are, they have come to, to the, to the point where these variances, they're not, they're not gonna be handing those out like they were in the past.
Well, that's good, I mean, I, my, my, from the very beginning, my concern had always been with the streets, because the narrow streets makes it unsafe for emergency vehicles.
Absolutely.
And I, I was emergency planning manager for a county in Pennsylvania, and I learned the hard way when we had some people have problems, and there's no reason for the city to do the same thing, make the same mistakes, and, and fifty feet is great, okay? It could be forty feet, but fifty feet is where the standard should be, and definitely seventy-five foot lots.
Because you know where that developers come in, and then they're trying to get more houses.
Oh, yeah, I understand, I, I understand that process. That's why, that's why I bring it up, because it, it's kind of embarrassing if you spend all this money, have K K K come in, and with our consider, opinion, they've, they've put this thing out there, and I know that the mayor is gonna brag about what we're doing, but then, six months later, you're gonna turn around and the, the city council's gonna, no, we're gonna grant variances.
Of course, it's all there we are, and they've gotten real sick of doing this. And I'll let you guys go, go pass it on.
Those are the only things that I saw, what I went through it, that raised some alarms.
So when we go through here, you want us to look at chapter seventy-eight, ninety-eight, article one, article three, article six, article seven, and article nine?
That's correct.
Okay. If we see something else, fine, but you're really wanting us to get, hone in on this right here? And so with that, will that help with the aesthetics or the historic look moving into Montgomery with any, any company that wants to start building? That's what I'm.
These are temporary proposed ordinances that will, if once, once they're adopted, would take place, and it would affect anything from that point moving forward once adopted, until the final versions are brought back.
All right.
And that's all within that new downtown.
Unified development.
Right, it only goes so far east, west, north, and south.
Right, but like he brought up, on that west side, no, we have an ordinance where it says no box.
Yeah.
Right, but they're encroaching, like it, it's coming, and we have to stand our ground and say, this is Montgomery, and we're trying to keep something without, I guess, losing money, I guess.
These topics are for subdivisions, general district and zoning maps, historic preservation, building design, and tree preservation.
There you go. Okay. Okay, I got some good reading to do. I'm gonna blow that up, big print.
All right, we, good, on ten, okay, is there any commission inquiries at all?
I just wanna bring up the trash cans again.
Yeah.
I think that's going into the ordinance, while they're putting something in the ordinances for those.
All right.
I know that was brought up by Cheryl Fox at the, that Monday meeting.
Okay.
Well, on that note, I make a motion adjourned.
A second.
All right, we have a motion for adjournment. Take a second, we do, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting adjourned at seven fifteen.
Chris, thanks for your, all you know, for your work.
Thank you.
Tom.
I got it.
Say so.
Okay.